Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 15th Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll read the agenda. At 7:00, we'll have acceptance of carved wooden town seal for Andrew Gala Meeting Room. At 7:05, citizens input. 7:10, public hearing, Craft Group LLC, NCA Men's Lacrosse. 7:20, Board of Selectmen will have the board reorganization. Our 7:25 is canceled. That's going to be postponed to a later date.
That's correct.
Okay. 7:35, hawkers and peddlers, appeal hearing concerning hawkers and peddlers license application, possible action. 7:45, Foxborough Founder's Day Committee information. 7:55, Beta Group Inc., pavement management system presentation. 8:20, selectmen's update. 8:25, town managers' update. 8:30, assistant town managers' update. And we have a bunch of action items. Bill, can you listen to the pledge? Do you stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get started, just a couple of comments. First, want to thank Ginny Capola for her six years of service. She always brought insight into the inner workings of the State House, which was always interesting. So, I want to thank Ginny personally, on behalf of the board. I'd like to welcome our newest member, Leah Gibson. Congratulations. Be a sponge. It's going to be a learning experience. You've all been there. Don't be afraid to ask questions. Congratulations, Chris, on your reelection. This is the board for the next year. So, congratulations, everybody. 7:00, acceptance of carved wooden town seal for Andrew Gala Meeting Room.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just, at this point, I'd like to just give you a little bit of a brief background with respect to the wood carving and how this came about. There was, when we first moved into the building, as you can see, there are still a number of blank walls in the building, and we're trying to fill them up with things that really are reflective of the community itself, the historic nature of Foxborough, and the sense of community that this place has. And one thing that I've seen in my travels to other communities is something that is truly a remarkable piece of work that can be done, that identifies with the towns rather significantly, and the most significant piece of that is the town seal. One thing that we wanted to have done, it's one thing to have one that's sort of like prepared commercially, that shows up nicely, but is not really, not truly reflective of the amount of work and effort that goes into an actual hand-cobbed piece of work. So, I actually asked around to see if anybody in this community had that skill level that could do something like that. And Mike Johns, our veterans' agent, said, "I know just the guy." And so, what we, who we have here tonight is a guy who has remarkable talents. When we started out this discussion with Mike, Mike Davidson, who is here tonight, my first meeting with him was, he showed me some of the work that he'd done, which is absolutely remarkable, the work that he does and the skill level that he has. But his background is actually extraordinary unto itself. So, I'll let the chairman speak to that in just a second, but I just want to say to you that I am really excited about the work that Mike has done here. The level of detail that he presents and the work that he's performed is extraordinary, and it's something that this town will have as a historic piece for many, many years to come. And many of you will remember that the old town hall had a seal at the end of the building that was, you know, really sort of signified, you know, that the old town hall and people really identified with that piece. We actually saved that, and it's actually at the old, it's at the, it's at the Ophium Theater now, so we've actually kept that piece. This actually will be a piece that goes with this building. This is a brand-new building, and something that we wanted to have that would really stick out, and something that everybody would really marvel at when they saw it. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to the chairman, who has a little bit of background about Mike, Mike Davidson, who was a resident of Foxborough and an extraordinary veteran and a guy with amazing talent. Mr. Chairman?
We won't comment on your dress.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do.
Michael Davidson is an accomplished carpenter and woodworker, whose attention to detail and skills are indicative of a true professional. When Mr. Davidson is honing his craft, he serves as a Cub Scout master for PAC 116. Mike currently works as a test engineer for the FAA, and before that, he served the nation in the United States Air Force, retiring as lieutenant colonel. Mike was one of the first to be notified to establish forward operations against the Taliban and Al Qaeda terrorist organization Afghanistan in 2001, as he was a military attache in Uzbekistan. Mike, I think it's only appropriate if you come up and do the unveiling for us.
So, Mike, can you just give every folks a little bit of a description of the work that was involved here, and the kind of wood, the whole piece of it that you put into, on time you put into this?
This is a, you know, I carved this out of cherry so it matched the rest of the town hall, the trim, the siding in the town hall. It has most of the major elements of the seal. There's a couple of things I did differently, and I'd like to thank the Foxborough Historical Commission, especially Jack Othlet, for really helping me out with that. If you see here, the spinning wheel here is actually the spinning wheel you'd find in the basement of the Foxborough Historical Society, and I believe it's going to be out there fairly soon. You know, you see the house, the well, the furnace, the stumps. What I did is I worked very hard to make sure that is, like all my work, is as realistic as possible. I modeled the house on an actual salt box house. The well, there's a few wells in the New England area, mostly in situ what I modeled after, and the tree stumps, the tree stumps from my backyard. Those are the trees that haven't been cut down, okay? What I did is I tried to make it as realistic as possible, as clean as possible, so it'd be a nice crisp pace that the town could appreciate throughout the years. You know, I did it for a number of reasons. This community is important to me. My family's been in this community since the early 1940s. The house I own was bought by my grandparents in 1943, and three of the people in this room, my uncle Teddy, Kevin, and Leon, grew up in that house. And so, it was important to me, and I bought it before I went overseas to Uzbekistan. So, as a sense of community, I wanted to give something back, and while I did the carving, I'd like to thank a few people, if I get the chance. I'd like to thank Cindy Haddad-Drew, who's the only other person that's ever worked on one of these, who gave me help. Jack Othlet, who managed to keep me going with his enthusiasm for it, and the Foxborough Historical Commission also, who helped me out with that. So, thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Great job.
Yeah, that's right. All right. Thank you.
So, if I could, through the chair, as Mike's leading. Mike's a pretty humble guy, and I got updates going over to his house. What he didn't mention to you is there's an easier way to do this. There are power tools, and routers, and electric saws. He did this all by hand, with wooden chisels, and I think one of the nicest things is if you went over his house when he was doing it, his wife Amy and son Harry, what Mike had said is he wanted his son to see the work that went into it and see it go on the wall as part of that history for him. But the hours that he did at his kitchen table with complete disregard for your wife and the wood chips and the sanding was something that you don't see often. In the middle of his kitchen, he did this by hand, and it took month?
I started, I got the job in last July. It took me one month of my job, and then I started in August, and I finished it last week.
Literally.
Yeah. It's, you know, I have to work through every single element of it, working through the house, house moving, the house, house moving, wheat, you know? And it was always the envision of how it was going to be there, with the black lettering against the cherry so it would match, and it would stand out, the lettering would stand out against the cherry silverware. And then, just one comment of aside, Mr. Keegan came by, before I had painted the letters. He's like, "Oh, I think it's done right now." And I looked at him and said, "Yeah, hold my bear." And then I painted the letters and went around. So, I hope you guys enjoy it.
We used to get, I used to get periodic updates, and he actually brought up by one day, and I said, "Well, you know, I can actually go buy your house. I mean, it's okay." He literally brought it up here, because, well, he wanted to see if it actually fit on the wall one day, and then, of course, it did. But he measured it like 35 times to make sure it would fit, but he, Mike is an absolute perfectionist, as you can see by the work that he does there, and I got to, I've never seen anything quite like this. And you really have to get up close to see the level of detail that goes into the lines and the, and the clad boards and everything in the house, the detail that's in it, because, and the lines even in the wheat itself. It's just extraordinary. So, I am very, very grateful for the work that you put into this. I think, as I said earlier, this is an heirloom for the community, something that we'll have for a long, long time, and that we're very, very grateful to have it. So, thank you.
Thanks again, Mike.
Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome to stay, if you want, but it's, I got, you know.
I got the snacks. Thank you.
It's been a long couple of nights, though, for us.
So, we'll move on to 7:05, citizens' input. Are you here for citizens' input?
My name's Richard Parker. I live at 79 West Street. Been a resident for 30 years. As most of you know, I've questioned the transparency of regional dispatch since it first became public, and I've been trying for over three years to get a copy of the complete and final feasibility study for the regional dispatch center, including Mansfield, Foxborough, Eastern, and Norton. And I'm very frustrated. It's been over three years. This paperwork still hasn't been provided. So, on January 17th, 2017, there was a joint selectmen's meeting at the Mansfield Town Hall with the selectmen from Mansfield, Foxborough, Eastern, and Norton. They showed a video presentation called the Regional Emergency Communication Presentation. They mentioned a two-year study that looked at current center operations, staffing, call volume, technical systems, facilities, training, QA, QI, and emergency medical dispatch. At the selectmen's meeting that we had here in Foxborough on January 24th, 2017, I was told by Mansfield Police Chief Sullen that he'd get me a copy of the feasibility study. At the selectmen's meeting on November 28th, 2017, I questioned the transparency of the regional dispatch process, and I quote from the minutes, "Our Parker expressed his concerns about the lack of transparency. B. Keegan said he would get him a copy of the feasibility study." At the Semerit Board of Directors meeting that took place in this room on December 5th, I asked the Semerit Board of Directors about the feasibility study. Executive Director Rob Redone gave me a copy of what he thought I was looking for. However, the only information he had was plans for the renovation of the 50 West Street Building in Mansfield, the old Mansfield Police Station. On February 26th, 2018, through a public information request to the town of Mansfield, I requested a copy of the complete and final feasibility study for the regional dispatch center involving Mansfield, Foxborough, Eastern, and Norton. I also requested a list showing the disbursement of the $100,000 grant. I received an answer from the town of Mansfield that they did not have any of the information that I requested. On March 5th, 2018, I once again requested a copy of the feasibility study from the town of Mansfield. I received a reply that Mansfield no longer has that information that I requested, and it's available from either Mr. Redone or State 911. On March 11th, 2018, I filed the public information request with State 911 requesting a copy of the feasibility study for the regional dispatch center involving Mansfield, Foxborough, Eastern, and Norton. The document I received were the plans for the renovation of 50 West Street in Mansfield. On March 19th, 2018, I attended a Semerit Board of Directors meeting. The public portion of the meeting lasted 22 minutes. The executive session, which I'm not allowed to attend, lasted one hour and 22 minutes. On March 29th, 2018, I attended the Semerit Board of Directors meeting. The public portion of the meeting lasted nine minutes. The executive session, which I'm not allowed to attend, lasted one hour and 10 minutes. On April 5th, 2018, I filed a public information request with the towns of Mansfield, Foxborough, Eastern, and Norton for a copy of the two-year study that was referenced in the Regional Communications Center video that was presented on January 17th, 2017. I requested the exact same information from all four towns. I asked for a copy of the two-year study, who did the study, and how much the study cost. As of this date, I have gotten no response from the town of Eastern. The town of Mansfield provided me with a copy of a radio study and the plans to renovate the building at 50 West Street in Mansfield, and said the cost and who did the study are informational and would not provide it. The town of Norton provided me with a presentation that it was, appears was given to its residents, as well as a draft feasibility study dated June 2015 by RCC Consulting, which went out of business, which included the towns of Attleboro, Mansfield, Foxborough, Eastern, and Norton. Foxborough provided me with a draft feasibility study dated 2015 by RCC Consulting, which included the towns of Attleboro, Mansfield, Foxborough, Eastern, and Norton. On April 2018, I attended a Semerit Board of Directors meeting. Public portion of the meeting lasted 29 minutes. The executive session, which I'm not allowed to attend, lasted about one hour and 30 minutes. On April 30th, I attended a Semerit Board of Directors meeting. The public portion of the meeting, again, nine minutes. The executive session that I'm not allowed to attend was about an hour. So, for four Semerit Board of Directors meetings, the public part of it was one hour, five hours in executive session, and it was voted at a few of the meetings that I attended to approve the executive session minutes, but not to release them to the public. On May 14th, yesterday, I paid the town of Foxborough $80 to fill my Freedom of Information request that I, that was dated March 5th, 2018. I paid the $80, even though I feel that the information that I requested is in the best interest of the residents of Foxborough, as well as the residents of Mansfield, Eastern, and Norton. In closing, I would like to ask for a copy of all documents that the selectmen in the town of Foxborough used to make the decision to pursue regional dispatch for the town. Also, with the information I've provided you tonight, I am hoping that someone can explain to me how the process has been transparent. I thank you for your time, and would like to know the next date that regional dispatch will be on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen. I know you can't answer, but I just felt that I had to get it out there. Thank you.
Anybody else here for citizens' input? Move to 7:10, public hearing, Craft Group LLC, NCA Men's Lacrosse.
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Lodge, Chapter 140, Section 181, and Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Town of Foxborough General Bylaws, Chapter 229, and also the Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May 15th, 2018, beginning at 7:10 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, to review the application submitted by NPS LLC for the 2018 NCAA Men's Lacrosse Championships. All events are proposed for Gillette Stadium. Applications for the events, for these events is on file at the Office of Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Thank you. We're certainly honored to host our fifth NCA Championship since 2008. It's a tremendous opportunity to welcome the college lacrosse community, and really the lacrosse community as a whole. We'll have fans from 42 different states here, several international countries. We've now had, as I've mentioned five times, hosted this event, and we've set numerous NCA attendance records, and it is a real privilege to host this event. So, this year's event is slated for May 26th through 28th, Memorial Day weekend. It's always Memorial Day weekend. This is the 49th NCA Championship hosted on Memorial Day weekend. The Division I semifinals are on Saturday. First game is slated for noon, second game at 2:30. Sunday is the Division III, first at 1:00, and then the Division II Championship at 4:00. And then Monday, we conclude with the Division I Championship at 1:00. We're scheduled for lots to open four hours prior to each first game. So, on Saturday, the lots will open at 8:00, on Sunday and Monday at 9:00, and the gates will open an hour and a half prior to the first game each day. We will have a fan festival, as we have in years past, in Lot 22, the West Club Lot. That is an event conducted by the NCA and its corporate partners. Adjacent to that will be a, what we call, reunion village, where we have a number of youth programs and colleges that will have tailgate opportunities for their families and their alumni to gather before and after the games. You'll later review the alcohol license that's tied to the fan festival event. We're expecting, from an attendance standpoint, 30,000 on Saturday, 20,000 on Sunday, and 30,000 on Monday. This is the second year in this agreement that we've had with the NCA. The event leaves us after this year and goes to Philadelphia for two years. We certainly hope to bring the event back in the future. We will be selling alcohol in the stadium, as we normally would, as far as all of our control mechanisms, et cetera. The event is being sold as either a three-day package ticket, or now we're selling single-day tickets as well. It is a very strong family event with many, many kids here, lacrosse players, both boys and girls, so there are, there are a lot of families. Parking is included in the price of the tickets, and we've been, we've been communicating with fans regularly for months. We're now in the mode of communicating operational logistics to the fans, parking, traffic controls, gates, lots, et cetera, so that everyone's educated as to the event when they, when they arrive on event day. We do allow for this event overnight parking for RVs. Last year, we had seven there in the parking lot adjacent to the Renaissance Hotel. We do have overnight security checking on them. We do offer pumping trucks to them every morning, so we do keep the lot clean and all for them. And that's really a rundown of the event. George, do you have anything to add?
We reviewed the application at a Stadium Advisory Committee meeting, and we felt that the stadium had proactively dealt with all the issues associated with it. The police, the fire department, Board of Health, and the building commissioner were there. We're very happy to have them attend, and, you know, they felt very comfortable. They offered input in terms of things that you've incorporated, and the committee recommend to the board for approval of this application, based on it.
Questions from the board?
And I said it before, Mr. Butterfuoco's, as far as I, as long as I can remember, has been running the lacrosse program there. Very, very good to the Foxborough youth, Foxborough High School, all the youth. It is a family event, and it's been very successful. I feel one, excited that it's back again. You guys do a nice job.
Thank you.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All's in favor?
Move to approve the NPS LLC application for the NCAA Men's Lacrosse Championships at Gillette Stadium to be held from May 25th, 2018, to May 28th, 2018.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. 7:20, Board of Selectmen, board reorganization. So, the way this will work is there'll be a nomination for a new chair, a second, a vote, nomination for a vice chair, second, a vote, nomination for secretary, a second, clerk, and then there'll be a vote. Before we ask for nominations, I just want to thank the board for allowing me to serve as chair for the last two years.
I think we're the ones that owe you thanks for serving the two years.
It's, it was an honor. It's a lot of work, but I'm happy to be stepping aside.
But we could nominate you.
So, I'll open it up to nominations.
I'll stick my thought in for a second, and likewise, thank you for the leadership over the last two years. I've watched Chris for the last three years. Won a very, won top vote on a very positive campaign. I'm comfortable if Chris has the time, I'd like to nominate Chris for chairman this year.
Second. I would be honored.
Okay. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And condolences.
Nomination for vice chair.
I'll nominate Doc, vice chair.
I'll second that.
Motion was made, seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And condolences.
Nomination for vice chair.
I'll nominate Doc, vice chair.
I'll second that.
Motion was made, seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And condolences.
Nomination for clerk.
I'll nominate Doc, vice chair.
I'll second that.
Motion was made, seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And condolences.
Nomination for vice chair.
I'll nominate Doc, vice chair.
I'll second that.
Motion was made, seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Doc. And clerk, nomination for clerk.
My thought on that is seeing Doc come in here with very little experience in jumping in as clerk, it's a tremendous learning tool that forces you to read and understand and be prepared. Having said that, you did a great job for the time that you were on.
Two years.
Yeah, so thank you for that. With the same thought, if there's no objection, I'd like to nominate Leah for that position as a, as a tool to kind of get your boat legs quicker.
I agree with you, Jim. I was, my first year I was clerk, it kind of gets you indoctrinated into the board.
And you'll have, I'll second that. Seconded. And under discussion, you'll have plenty of support, so don't worry about it.
Okay. I know that Chris finished out that last meeting when Doc became clerk.
And I will today.
Okay. Motion made, seconded. No further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations to the new board.
Yeah.
So, our 7:25 is not here. We postponed that, correct? Michael Laracy is unavailable. A little ahead of schedule. Why don't we do some action items?
Let me just pull them down.
That would be you.
No, I'll, I'll. I was serious about Doc finishing up the reading. That was a joke.
Move to approve the finish-at-the-50 road race event application for July 3rd, 2018.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All's in favor?
Move to approve three one-day wine and malt beverage liquor license applications for May 26th through May 28th, 2018, for the NCAA Lacrosse Championships Fan Festival.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All's in favor?
Move to approve the Memorial Day event application. No, I'll...
I was serious about Doc finishing up the reading. That was a joke.
Move to approve the finish-at-the-50 road race event application for July 3, 2018.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve three one-day wine and malt beverage liquor license applications for May 26 through May 28, 2018, for the NCAA Lacrosse Championships Fan Festival.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the Global War on Terror Memorial Commissioning Event on May 18, 2018, at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All's in favor?
Move to approve the Memorial Day event application on May 28, 2018.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept the gift donation of $2,500 from Joseph Earhart, president of the Foxborough Skate Park Association, to maintain and repair the Foxborough Skate Park.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to thank Joe. He's put a lot of work into that the last few years to get it to speed, so I appreciate it.
More importantly, make it safe.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Joe.
That looks great.
Any further discussion? See none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept the gift donation in the amount of $2,350 from IGO Cares, which is the IGO PTO, for five booth scholarships, with the condition that the IGO school will receive, will select the five children.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $250 from the MSP Memorial Fund, $200 from Michael and Janice Johns, $100 from Deborah Giordano, $75 from the Noonan Family, $50 from Philip Giordano, and $20 from Raymond and Mary Smith toward the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial.
Just to clarify, that last one was 25, not 20?
Apologize. 25.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All's in favor?
Move to accept the gift donation of $5,600 from the Partners in Patriotism Fund for the Haiti International Police Exchange Program.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
Just on discussion on that one? It's the only gift donation receipt form that there's no department or board recipient. Is that, this going to the selectmen, or who applies?
It actually goes to the selectmen, have to accept it, and it'll actually go to the police department, or to the police to pay for the exchange program.
But the police department is the one that applied for it?
No, they didn't apply. Actually, what happened, originally, they applied for a grant originally, but then when they didn't realize they couldn't do it, applied for a grant, then what happened was that the Partners in Patriotism really enjoyed, really liked the program, so they offered it as a gift. So that's the reason why it has to be accepted this way. So they couldn't actually apply for one. So they actually, so the program actually is, it's actually a gift, which is unusual. They don't normally give a gift, but this is, but they felt strongly about the program. So they actually, they did not, they withdrew their application as a applicant for the program several months ago, actually.
They applied, and then they withdrew?
They withdrew it. Yeah, they actually withdrew it.
And then the paid... Only because this is a big number, and I just want to make sure the paperwork's clear.
Yeah, the committee, the committee actually, however, was very impressed by the program. Actually, I think the J.C.'s or the Lions Club was actually involved in this too. And they actually were very impressed by the program to the point where they felt that they wanted to actually participate, but they realized they couldn't do it through a grant, so they gave it as a gift. And they would have to come to the board to accept it that way. And that is acceptable to do it that way. It can be done as a gift.
Okay, thank you.
Motion made, seconded. No more further discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the Orpheum Theater for a three one-day wine and malt beverage liquor license applications. One for the Nick and Vero, Nick Vero Superhero Movie Night on May 19, 2018, from 4:00 PM to 12:00 midnight. The second for the IGO Elementary School and the Green Roy Academy of Irish Dance on June 2, 2018, from 12:00 PM to 11:30 PM. And the third one for the Maureen Hancock and RKO Army Expanded Universe on June 22, 2018, from 5:30 PM to 12:00 midnight.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
Just under discussion, I need to recuse myself on the, I'm a board member on the old team.
Under further discussion, too, on the three different applications, we didn't get all three. We got two duplicate ones. So the last one, we don't have a copy of it, the Maureen Hancock and RKO Army Expanded Universe. I don't know if, what happened there.
Do we have the original?
I can go upstairs. Do you want me to go up and get it?
It's just kind of like a clerical thing. I don't know.
You need to sign off on it anyways, I guess, right?
So it's the third one, the Maureen Hancock?
Yeah, yeah. Looks like we got two of the Irish Dance ones and one of the first ones.
Do you want to do that? You want to just hold the vote?
Sure. If you want to just wait till you actually see the actual document, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean...
Just verify, make sure we have...
You're ahead of schedule anyways, at this point.
Yeah, just make sure we have the right application.
Yeah.
Go to the next one?
Yep.
Yeah, we get...
Move to approve a boot drive for the Foxborough Founders' Day Committee on 5, 2018, to raise funds for fireworks from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All's in favor?
Move to approve Foxborough Founders' Day Public Event Application for Saturday, June 9, 2018.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Any discussion since the... You want to let them say a few words about it?
I think they're going to be on the agenda.
They're on the agenda.
Oh, they are. Okay, they are.
Yep.
Does that work?
That's good.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right. 7:35, Hawkers and Peddlers Appeal Hearing Concerning Hawker and Peddler's License.
So, Mr. Chairman, what we have here is a situation where the applicant has applied to the police department for consideration for a Hawkers and Peddlers license. The application was reviewed by the police chief. He performed a background check, as required by the statute, for this particular license. The response came back that it did not indicate that it was favorable for the applicant. As such, the chief has denied the application. The process is that anyone who feels that they want to pursue the application following the action by the chief, is that they have to appeal the decision to the Board of Selectmen. You are the appeal agent in this case. The chief is actually in California today for the annual NFL Security Conference signing today. Here, the very able Lieutenant Noonan is here to present on behalf of the town. So Lieutenant Noonan, would you like to speak?
Sir. Good evening. In accordance with the town bylaw on Hawkers and Peddlers, Chief Baker conducted a diligent and background investigation on Mr. Horner's reputation in regards to his morals and integrity. As a result of this background investigation, Chief Baker determined that Mr. Horner was not suitable to obtain a Hawkers and Peddlers license in the town of Foxborough. Mr. Horner was notified in writing of Chief Baker's denial and the basis for his denial, and he stands here tonight in appeal.
Before we get started, does anybody have to be sworn in?
I would say, yeah, I would say probably, it's probably the best thing to do is probably do it. Given the circumstances, I know we had that situation before. It's probably a good idea if anybody is going to testify, so I'd like to swear, we'd probably just swear everybody in who's going to say anything. So everybody raise their right hand, please. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Horner, would you like to make any comments?
Yes, I do have a record. I just want to go back on this. My record is domestic. I was in the military, was involved in an explosion, suffered a closed head, as well as PTSD. Untreated, undocumented, until everything fell apart in my life, which totally destroyed me. I was a police officer in the past, I was an MP in the military, and things that happened while in my military service has caused me to have issues later on in life. I have a letter from the VA that since that incident has happened, I have done PTSD classes, PTSD training, I've had DBT classes, I've done anger management, I've done anxiety classes, I've done all kinds of group therapies, individual therapies, medication therapies, and I'm continuing with that in my life to get myself back to where I was prior to military service. I've not had any issues since I started going to the VA, since I started receiving treatment. And I did my time. I, you know, I accepted what was going on, I got my punishment, I did my days at Bristol County, I did my probation, I paid my fines, I did my community service that I had to do, and I came out of it. And this is away from me, I mean, the rehabilitation aspect of it. I feel that I've done everything that I was asked to do, and here I am.
And more.
Yeah, and more. I mean, I did classes that I didn't have to. I mean, I did DBT classes six times. It was six months at a time that you had to take this class once a week, and I did it. Once it was over with, I did it again and again, because I just figured that you only absorb so much at a time, that if I did it more, I would absorb more and be able to handle everything that was going on. So, this is my current wife. We have been out in the town of Foxborough since 2000, or I have since 2000, she's been out there since 2011. We had a food peddler's license. I've been out there selling sausages on the side of the road at a Patriots game since the year 2000. Never had a problem. Helped the police department win. You know, there's a lot of drunks that come and they fall and they smash their faces. I make the phone calls, there's a lot of car accidents out there. I'm helping people while I'm standing there, as well as selling my stuff. I've been doing that since, like I said, the year 2000. I don't want to do food anymore. It's too difficult. I mean, the rules that are coming with food, about safety, having a little stand out there, it's just not worth it for me to be out there from 8:00 in the morning until, you know, by the time I get home and get everything cleaned up and put away, it's, yeah, it's an 18-hour day for us. So we decided to do souvenirs. And when I originally changed over to souvenirs, I went to the state of Massachusetts and I asked about licensing for there. And they told me I didn't need one. So I was out there selling souvenirs. Never had a problem. Next year, I think it was the last game of the year, somebody from the state police came up and goes, "Where's your permit?" I said, "Here's the paperwork from the state." They said I didn't need one. And they said, "Well, you need to go to town of Foxborough and get one." I went, I thought where it was Route 1. Yeah, and I'm on private property, I'm not walking up and down the street, I'm sitting in the America's Best Value Inn, and same spot I've been for years. And so that's why I went to the state. And when they told me that I needed to get one for this year, here I am. I mean, I'm trying to do everything by the book. I know, like I said, in the past, I've had issues with relationships and stuff like that, but I was also not diagnosed until after the last incident. So, and that's when I went to the VA and asked for help.
It was like 11 or 12 years ago.
What one?
With your, with what happened?
Which part?
The arrest.
Oh, no, no, that was 2009. That's, that was 2009, correct?
I'm sorry?
The arrest was 2009?
To the best of your knowledge...
Yeah, I think it was 2009, maybe '08. Not sure. But ever since then, like I said, I did my time. I did the probation, I did the community service, I worked at the VA. So I'm here asking you guys, give me a chance. I mean, I try to be, I mean, I'm not from Foxborough, I live in North Attleboro, I've been there since 1999, and, but I've been out working in Foxborough on the side of the road since 2000.
Were you aware of the application requirements, that a background check could possibly...
When I came up to fill out the form, she said you need to fill this out and have it sent to the chief of police. So I did.
Okay. Did you make any of your other history available?
No, I figured he was going to run a background check and he'd pull it up right then and there. There was no, you know, it wasn't anything, you know, do you have any prior convictions or anything like that, if I remember correctly? But like I said, I do have this letter here, I do have, I printed out some stuff from the National Center for PTSD about PTSD and anger. I've got my 100% VA card on me.
You've been out there for a long time, you know, for...
Yeah, I've been out there for, like I said, since 2000. I've never had a problem out there with anybody. I mean, I can get into background about how the domestics and stuff happen, but it really doesn't matter. It happened. So...
No, I understand.
Do you have a, is this the only town you've ever done this in, selling sausages or, you know, souvenirs? Do you have a...
Well, back, God, back in the 80s, my children wanted to work at Fenway Park, that was back when I was a police officer, and I was working for Boston Housing. And I knew some people at Fenway. So they got my kids in there to work Fenway, and because we lived on the South Shore, somebody had to drive them up there because they were 15 years old to get into Boston. So we all worked together up there at Fenway Park for a couple of years. So that was, that was it.
And you said you were, you've been a sausage vendor up there on Route 1 since 2000?
Yes.
Any, ever have any issues at all doing that?
Never.
No?
Board of Health come out, inspect me, say, okay, we...
They come up too?
Yeah. Yeah, we had, yeah, we'd have the police come up and eat off of our stands and stuff like that. But I started with George. I don't know if anybody was here with George, was the Board of Health agent? George was the first Board of Health agent I dealt with.
See, you also mentioned the arrest was in 2009?
Yes, sir.
So did that have anything...
Maybe '08. Somewhere in that area.
Yeah. Was that, did it have anything to do with the selling sausage?
It was all domestic. I came home and found my wife with somebody else and...
Yeah, we don't need to go there, I just wasn't sure if it was...
It's not me.
Yeah, not his wife. So we work out there together now. It's just the two of us. I go to Vanity Fair Outlet down in North Dartmouth, I buy stuff. I buy stuff from Forever Collectibles, I buy stuff from St. Louis Wholesalers, and just, I buy stuff from Lids, I buy stuff from Gillette Stadium. And set them up on a table and, you know, mark it up $5, and we go out there and have a good time, you know? It's a lot of fun to be out at a football game. Kind of not when it's snowing, but, and we have a good time at it. We know a lot of people, a lot of the regulars, the season ticket holders. I mean, I've been dealing with Vic at the parking lot since 2000, and his father, Jack, and...
Okay. Good.
Rich, in light of what he had said about his rehab since then, do you think Chief Baker, and I know you can't really answer for him, took that into consideration? Did he know any of that? Do you think when he denied, or is this all new information, you know, the rehab he's gone through since and his diagnosis he now has?
Yeah, background investigation included just a criminal histories systems check, and never, there was no follow-up interview with Mr. Horner.
Okay.
And at the same time, we can't confirm or deny that he's, you know, he's attended everything that he's attended to, so...
Well, that was going to be my next question, sliding down that way. Is there any way we can get copies of everything that...
I can give you this right here. This is from the, my social worker over at the VA. It's on VA Letterhead. She's put down what I've had for treatment and stuff like that. And I can, more than happy to give that to you. So unfortunately, the VA, I mean, if you want my medical records, you're going to get everything from the day I was in the explosion, until I was there the other day with a torn meniscus in my knee. You'll have, you'll get a stack like this. It's not like I can go to them and say, "Can you just give me my mental health records?" They'll give me a, so, and I started in the military in 1982, so...
When are you looking to, would you be up there for the lacrosse tournament?
No, I only do, I do the country concerts, I sell cowboy hats at the country concerts, and the football games.
Okay.
I don't even do any of the other concerts, only country. I mean, because I'm not licensed to sell, like, Bon Jovi t-shirts or, you know, Springsteen or anything like that, I'm only, so I can go up there and sell cowboy hats, I'm not a licensed item.
Okay, all right. So, we do have a little time.
So, we have time. I mean, if the board wants...
And if, and the other thing I was gonna say to the board, I mean, if it makes you guys feel more comfortable, I mean, I put it in my name only because I guess I'm a chauvinistic guy, and I went, I came down with the forty-six bucks and filled out the paperwork. My wife is totally, I mean, I can put it in her name if that makes you guys feel better. I'm gonna be out there anyway, working with her, but I don't want to circumvent the system, you know what I'm saying? But she's here also that we can put her on the license if that makes it, makes it stand up better.
Any other questions?
No, thank you for coming forward. I know this is a lot of personal stuff, it's hard to share.
It is what it is.
So, my thoughts are, ours and yours are on a process, and we relied on Chief Baker and our court reforms and all that stuff. And to what the lieutenant was saying, he can't confirm or deny what you're saying is true or not, and I'm not saying it's not, but to have it settled at this meeting is just so far out of our realm.
I have my discharge papers.
I'm not qualified to understand PSDs or VA medical records, nor do I want your personal stuff.
No, no, I meant the award letter that says I'm disabled.
Mm-hmm. I'm wondering if there's a, rather than sending it out to five selectmen, if there's a process to revisit this process with the police chief, have him take a second look at it and then revisit it again. I'm a little uncomfortable putting it under someone's name now that publicly said it's basically yours, but going under someone else's name, so now that's out. I'm wondering if that would be okay with the board.
Chairman, go ahead.
I'm not comfortable on the public safety aspect when our, when our chief denies the application, and he's not here. Can we remand it back to the chief?
Certainly can.
Under the guise, under the auspice of new information and have the chief take another look at the application with the new information.
Right. I think that was gonna be my recommendation, in light of the fact that new information has been made available, I think that the, unfortunately, the information that came forward from the background check was pretty compelling in and of itself, which was why we're here tonight. However, there are additional information that has been made available, which was not, may not, no one's been available to the chief for consideration. So, perhaps if the chief feels the same way following that review internally with the lieutenant and the chief together, if he feels differently following that, then certainly that could be, that could be, he could be relied on for that decision at that point. If he feels, still feels compelled to stand by his decision, then you could be back here as well. And there is time to do that, since the country concert isn't till August, so you've got a little bit of time.
I think Taylor Swift is in July.
Taylor Swift is coming up in June or July.
June, July, end of June.
Yeah, June, July, so, so you got a little bit of time, but not a lot of time, but I think you've got a little time to consider that. In light of the information that you have here, I wouldn't feel comfortable sharing it with the board right now, so you might want to just share it with the chief and have him consider that and then see if his position has...
Should I give it to the lieutenant?
Give it to the lieutenant, have him look at it with the chief, and then if there's a different perspective on that, following that, you may have to want, may want to have a face-to-face conversation with him as well.
That's fine.
So, Bill, should we take a vote to remand it back to the chief?
I would, you can do two things. You could remand it back to the chief, or you could table it for the time being for further review by the chief, given the fact that new information has been made available, which he was not available, not aware of.
Well, I would feel better if we took a vote and remanded it back to the chief because the board has reorganized, can be in a little different positions.
Fair enough. Yeah, that's, it's entirely up to you, but you can do it either way.
I'll leave that up to the board, but I think, I think that's best, and we'll keep it cleaner that way.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay, move to remand back to the chief in light of additional information.
Second.
Motion made, second any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay.
The hardest-working people in show business.
And paid the least, right?
Well, I'm told, well, you know, I'd like to just say thank you already because you guys have already approved everything.
Exactly.
And so, I think that's really awesome, and you've been very supportive of the event as a whole. One thing that we did discuss, and I don't think we finished up with, was shuttle transportation. So, we were looking for a bus to get around town for people. So, you know, we get a lot of people walking, some people are having trouble walking, there's not a lot of parking down at the booth, going between the parade and the booth and stuff like that, so...
Cindy, could you speak a little bit more into the mic for the public to hear that? Thank you.
Okay. So, we had discussed a bus that would get people around town and thought it might be a good option to try to introduce this type of a system, and maybe using Founder's Day as the catalyst for it. And a school bus would be a great option if we could get one and have somebody that would be willing to, you know, either volunteer to drive that day or see if we can do something like that.
What Cindy said, there's a large setup area at the 132 Central Street area, and, you know, we have the field events. And like Cindy said, there's a bunch of people that may have ambulatory issues or just need to get between two places.
So, you see this bus from like the parade down to the field and back up to the center or to wherever?
Well, we've been able to have a relationship with the Schneider Electric Company, and their parking lot that's off of Railroad Ave, Bird Street, seems to be a good area for people to park if they wanted to. And it might be a good option, like, to use the other parking lots throughout town, like Church Emanuel tends to be a good one, St. Mary's tends to be a good one. The booth parking lot is too tight and is too limited. You can only use it for certain people, and we have parking permits for that. So, we've been, you know, sometimes it's, there's no way that people can really get around, they don't have the ability to walk that far. So, if we can open it up a little bit and maybe offer, because we've been talking about other events in town, so this would be just like kind of maybe a kickoff, and maybe not a school bus all the time, but this would be a good way to start introducing this. And I'm thinking like events from, you know, people can park here, and if they want to get uptown for something, it's a short shuttle, but it might make a difference with people being able to get around.
What about the Council on Aging van? Do we use that?
That's a possibility.
It's certainly a possibility. We'll have to work that out with them, but certainly, it's a town vehicle, so we could certainly...
I think we were talking about seating, you know, capacity might be an issue with that one. I'm not sure how many seats does that have.
It has limited seat, but I think it does have handicap access, if I'm not mistaken.
And that might be perfect.
My only fear, if you had a full-size bus with the amount of pedestrian traffic and stuff, it might be more of a hassle. So, a smaller bus, a van type thing.
Founder's Day would... Some information about the bus, just so you guys, a heads up. I don't think you would be allowed to get a volunteer. We tried to, I think it was girls' field hockey, we tried and get a bus, and not that somebody wouldn't be willing to do it, but believe it or not, I believe the union wouldn't allow them to volunteer time with a town bus, just to give you a heads up. So, if the van is another option, of course, look into it, but I just remember we had a couple of bus drivers that were willing to volunteer their time, and of course, I guess, the field hockey, some of the parents would pitch in for gas for the bus, and it was, it was mixed because of, you know, even though they wanted to do it, the union wouldn't allow them to do it. So, you might want to look into it, but if the, if the van is actually owned by the town, maybe a better, better fit.
We do have, the drivers that we have are also, are in the union as well, but a different union.
We have some non-benefit people.
Right.
Like, fielding drivers that might be able to...
We might be able to work that out. Something we'd have to explore.
I'll reach out to you, I might be able to help.
Perfect.
Great.
I appreciate it. And I, I believe that's all we have for tonight.
Yeah.
Appreciate everything you guys have already done for us.
Thanks for your support in the past and tonight as well.
Looking forward to seeing you out there.
How was the float participation? Is that, how are the numbers on that?
Monica.
Monica.
Monica. I missed the question.
The number of floats that have signed up already?
Sad to say, we've got five participants, but it's still early. I normally don't get mine. The deadline's next Friday, they'll come in the week after Memorial Day. So, there's still time, there's plenty of time. We're looking to do an article in The Reporter asking, or letting people know what the process is. This year's theme lends itself to a vote. This year lends itself to a great vote, float idea. It's the thirtieth year, so throw a birthday party on top of your float. There we go. So, looking forward to it, praying for good weather, of course.
We can have all of our selectmen jumping out of a cake.
That'd be nice.
Just for the board's understanding and edification, we did actually include some additional funding in the budget this year for, for this event.
Thank you very much.
Given the fact that it's, it's such a great event, and someone that I know the community really truly enjoys, it's something that we were, we were easily convinced it was something that was worthy of some additional funding. So, and Cindy and her committee and her crew were asked after us to try and do something with that, and we were able to do that. So, and that was approved last night, so...
Thank you very, very much.
Thanks very much for that.
Thank you.
Not official.
Not officially. Well, if you really want it, you gotta come and show up at the meeting next Monday night to make sure it actually gets fully approved, yeah.
Thank you, and then, yes.
To be continued, yeah.
How are you guys all sat down at the field? You get all the same participants back and...
We have, we have actually a few more than we had in previous years, so it's been, we have more events and more booths than we've had in a while. And it's important because it's, it is all for nonprofits, and some local nonprofits, you know, our, our sports teams, our religious groups, our scouts and et cetera. For some, it's their biggest fundraiser of the year, so we're psyched, we got a, a good response this year.
Good.
And please copy us on any advertising or anything, we can put it on our Facebook, Twitter, website.
Yes, absolutely.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Beta Group Pavement Management System Presentation.
Roger. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just by way of introduction, the town has been, I think many of you, many, many people in the community know that the town has been working with a very deliberate and very specific program called the Pavement Management Program to try and improve the overall infrastructure, particularly the roads located throughout Foxborough. And as you can see, over time, particularly over the past four to five years, the, the, the surface pavements in throughout town has improved rather dramatically, so much so that it really, it was time, as we talked about internally, to really provide the board and the town with an update of how, how much progress we've actually made. Now, we still have some work to do, but I think the amount of work that we have now has actually been, is rather, is on the shorter side of things as opposed to when we first started. So, I, I want to commend Roger and his team and, and the Beta Group for, and all of the folks that have been involved in this project since day one for the work that they've done, because we really have come a long way, and it's really, I think you'll find it very gratifying to see how far we actually have come. So, Roger, you can take it away from here.
Thanks, Bill. I want to introduce Conrad Ledger. He's an engineer with the Beta Group. Just to let you know a little bit of history, we started this in 2012. We did our first pavement management plan then. Three years later, we decided it'd be a good idea to do, have an update, and we did that. And it's three years after that now, so we decided to do an update this year, and that's what Conrad's gonna present tonight. And after he's done, I'll go over a few of the roads that we're gonna do this year, so you have an idea of where we're gonna be working. Conrad?
Thanks, Roger. Good evening. Again, my name's Conrad Ledger from Beta Group. Just before we get started with the presentation, a little overview for the board of who Beta Group is and what we do. So, we're a full-service engineering firm, and one of our core disciplines is GIS and asset management, specifically pavement management. So, we work with over a hundred and fifty communities throughout New England, mostly on pavement management. So, today's presentation is gonna be a little introduction to what pavement management is and why you do it, and then from there, the results of the study that we've done and continue to do in the town of Foxborough. So, first off, what is pavement management? Pavement management is the practice for planning your pavement maintenance to maximize the value of your roadway network. So, one of the key components of pavement management is to perform the right repairs at the right time. This is a graphic of a pavement deterioration curve. So, on the left-hand side here is the, the condition rating, with a zero at the bottom being a pavement in very, very poor condition, and a one hundred at the top, a brand-new pavement. And then on the bottom, it shows time in years. So, as this pavement goes along the way and starts to deteriorate, it falls into different categories along the way. So, the first category is routine maintenance, then you have preventative maintenance, rehabilitation or reconstruction. So, there's a lot of different avenues for repairing and maintaining your roadways as they fall into those categories, and that's one of the things that pavement management promotes. So, some of the methods that we use here in town, starting on the left-hand side, pavements in good condition, cracked ceiling, fog ceiling, and then performing your random utility repairs or pothole repairs. The middle category, that's kind of those middle categories on that pavement deterioration curve, surface treatments, those are usually curb-to-curb treatments. Those include cape ceiling, micro-surfacing, and HMA overlays. And then when you get further down the curve, they become more costly and more detrimental to the traffic. Mill and overlay, reclamation, and reconstruction are those repairs that they use in town. So, just a little bit about the process that we went through as part of the program. As Roger said, we've been working in town now since 2012, and we kind of go through the same process every time we go through it. Twenty-twelve, twenty-fifteen, and again this year. And the reason you have to reinventory the roads and kind of redo the process is because the roadways deteriorate at different rates, you want to make sure when you're making your decisions, you have the most current information. So, first off, we start out with the roadway inventory and GIS mapping. We'll get into what that consisted of. The field inspection program, existing condition summary, which we're gonna present today for this latest round, and then the reoccurring task, capital improvement planning, which Roger and his staff do on a yearly basis, and then maintaining that system moving forward. So, first off, the roadways that we focus on is part of the study of the town accepted roadways. There's really four different categories that the roadways could fall into: town-accepted, town-unaccepted, private roadways, and state roadways. So, we focused our study on the ninety-four point one-one miles of accepted roadways. What the program allows you to do is, basically, we have inspectors that go out, they rate the roadways based on surface distresses, and what that does is it gives every roadway segment within the town a zero to one hundred rating, that rating scale that we showed at the beginning of the presentation. So, what that does is it places every roadway into those categories and allows us to do planning-level estimates on what needs to be done to the roadway at that current time. So, these is, this is just an example of some of the repair methods, and then the categories that they fall into and the associated costs to go along with it. So, now to get into the results of the study that we just did. So, out of those ninety-four roadway miles, the average road segment comes out to an eighty-three point two-five on that zero to one hundred scale, so pretty high, and I'll explain more of what that means as we go forward. But you can see thirty-five miles of the roadway fall into a defer maintenance category, so very, very good roadways. Same with that routine maintenance category, that's twenty-five point eight-seven miles of roadway. So, you can see more than fifty percent of your roadway network is basically very, very minor repairs need to be made to them. And generally, we see this when we look at other communities, we'll see this kind of with a shape like this, where you'll have some roadways in good shape, but you'll have a lot of roadways in poor condition as well. So, you can see that's a great difference compared to other communities that we work with. So, I thought I'd go through very, very quickly and kind of show the differences of what a twenty-eight looks like compared to a seventy-five. So, Beach Street, Section Five, was a roadway surface rating of twenty-eight. So, you can see a lot of potholes have been filled in, a lot of distress is shown on the surface. Fairway Lane, a road surface rating of fifty-one, so you can see a lot of cracking, I believe there's even some patching that went on, on this roadway as well. And then now we're talking about roadways that are up towards the top of the curve. You can see Carroll Drive here, sixty-eight. One of the things that I wanted to mention on both of these fixtures is you can see some routine maintenance has been done to those roadways already to keep them from falling further down the curve. So, acting proactively has allowed these roadways to kind of stay where they are rather than continuing to deteriorate quickly. they are rather than continuing to deteriorate quickly. And then you have roadways that have been recently worked on, like Ridge Path, uh, an RSR of an 85, and then Patriot Circle, which really shows no signs of distress at all at a 99. Um, so one of the things that I know Roger wanted me to focus on, uh, as part of the presentation is, where did we start and where have we, where are we now? So, um, the road surface rating, the overall rating for the town, uh, back in 2012 was a 74.8, um, and then the roadway rating now is that 83.25. That nine points or so difference doesn't sound like a lot, but when you go around and you drive a roadway and your average roadway looks like a 73 compared to an 83, it's, it's a big, big difference, um, from your, uh, rideability standpoint, so. The average, um, town in this region, or with all the towns that we work with, are somewhere in the low to mid 70s, so, uh, we're kind of where you folks started, and, and now you're way above the average now. Uh, one of the other things that the pavement management allows us to do is come up with a backlog of repair. Um, so give you an idea, if you were to go out and do all the maintenance on the roadways that needed to be done today, how much would that cost in today's dollar value? Um, so you can see, uh, all the roadways get classified into the different categories, and then we can associate costs to those as well. So, uh, the overall backlog is $7 million in the town right now. Uh, this allows us to do a couple of things. One is it kind of sets that benchmark moving forward to make sure that that backlog's not growing. It's still, uh, going down. Um, and then, it, it just gives us, uh, that benchmark in terms of the RSR as well, uh, to continue to monitor that and make sure that the, the program that, uh, is being put out for the town is, is working as beneficial as possible. Uh, this graphic here kind of shows, uh, the roadways broken down by functional classification. Um, so when I say functional classification, that means the roadways that are driven the most compared to the roadways that are driven the least. Um, so these chop, top two categories here, uh, the Minor Arterials and the Collectors, uh, you can see those roadways are in very good shape with ratings of 87.41 and 91.69. Um, and then you can see some of the minor roadways in the town, so the ones that are a little bit further down, but again, those are above-average roadways compared to other communities in the area. Um, so moving forward, um, the, Roger and his staff and, and we at Beta are gonna continue to monitor, uh, the capital plan moving forward and make sure that we make, uh, suggestions for the correct repairs at the right time, uh, and continue to improve the program, um, and, and just make sure that the money that is being spent on the roadways is being used in the most efficient way. Last, this is, uh, kind of the last two slides that I have here. Uh, one of the things that we do as part of the pavement management program is, um, we set those benchmarks moving forward, uh, but we can also, uh, forecast moving forward how much money needs to be spent on the roadway network to either maintain, uh, that 83 rating or to continue to raise that rating. Um, so these are just different level, funding levels that we looked at. Uh, you can see the bottom level of $500,000 a year just spent on roadways. Um, it's gonna deteriorate, uh, the overall rating. About a million dollars a year it's gonna take to maintain that overall rating, and then about $1.5 million is to, uh, grow that rating over the next five years. Uh, the, one thing that I want to point out, uh, with this as well, is this is strictly for curb-to-curb improvements. So, we're not talking about, uh, underground utility work that needs to be done or sidewalk work that goes along with it. So, um, the pavement management program focuses on the roadways itself, and then, as you build your capital plan, you have the ability to put in that other work that needs to be done in those roadways as well. Uh, so this is just kind of, uh, showing those, uh, talking points that we just spoke about. So, I'll turn it over to Roger, and he can talk about the capital plan moving forward.
First, let me ask if anybody has any questions for Conrad?
So, you did this, this data that you're showing now is 2018?
Uh, so we actually did the, um, the, uh, roadway ratings in, uh, at the end of last year, and, uh, now, we're just kind of getting the reports together and things like that.
Okay. But Beta got brought in at what time? This 17, 18, or were you here years back?
Oh, we, we've been here since 2012, yeah.
Okay. Is there a comparison that you could look at, the 2012 data, 2015 data, 2018 data, to see how that rating, you know, over time, it's, it's gonna come down, right? Just because of wear and tear in the roads, but how that average rating has changed since 2012, 2015, 2016?
Yeah, so that, that was actually that slide, um, this one here. So, the 2012 ratings were 74.8, and now, the new ratings are 83.25. So, they've gone up pretty substantially, uh, since we did the initial inspections.
And, and the, and the baseline stayed the same, the same roads, the same area of study?
Yep, exactly, yep.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
And one thing to piggyback on that, the $1.5 million to maintain that 83%, that's what that is, or is it a million dollars?
It's a million.
It's a million to maintain. Maintain it, and 1.5, we would be able to go up from maybe...
Continue to grow, yes.
So, one, one question. And I know it's, it's not our responsibility, um, but when you look at the grade crossings, okay, and, and the amount of people that have lost tires, I lost three this, this winter alone, not happy about it, but it happens. When you're doing your analysis, do you go right up to the easement of the, of the grade crossings? Do you even look at it?
We're, we're not allowed, we were not allowed to work any closer than 33 feet from the center line of the rails when Chesley had the system. Since Mass Rail has taken it over, uh, we're allowed to go right up to the tracks, but, um, I got some good news for you. Uh, Mass Rail is going ahead this year with, uh, four of the crossings, and next year with the other three, and they're gonna do a really good job on them with the resilient surfaces and the way they're done in other towns. Uh, in fact, we're gonna get signals on Mechanic Street, I believe, because they believe that's one of the worst of the, uh, the crossings. Um, and that, that work will start pretty soon. Uh, I think the first four they're gonna do are, uh, Spring Street, Elm Street, Leonard Street, and North Street, which is the worst one in town, I think. Um, and then, next year, they're gonna do, uh, a really tough one at Wall and Coacasset and Maple Place, and then they're gonna do Mechanic Street, and then they're gonna do the one that the, uh, that is, uh, right off of Railroad Avenue. So, it looks like over the next two years, they'll be completing those and getting them done well, and we'll help them, we'll work with them when they do them. Uh, what I want to say about, uh, the pavement management plan is the, the way we stay ahead of the power curve is you don't, you have to do work on streets that have a pretty good road service rating, or it's gonna get worse. So, every year, not only do we look at the, what's in the book, but then we go out and ride the roads before we make a final choice on what we're gonna do. I do a lot of crack sealing, and I know you've seen it all over town, and the reason I do that is water is the enemy of all pavement, and if you let water get into the, the subgrade, your pavement's gonna fail from the top down, and it fails fast. So, I, I like, um, fiber-reinforced rubber for sealing. Unfortunately, there was only two companies that were bidding that, and the second company I really didn't want to use, but they got bought out by the good company. So, this year, we're gonna go with seal coating, again, on all the crack sealing. Another product that wasn't mentioned in the, uh, in the PMS that we use is called Rubber Chip Seal. And, uh, exam, good examples of that would be Napont Street, which we did three years ago, and the section of South Street that runs from West Street up the hill to, uh, the 495 Overpass, and that's really good stuff. It's much cheaper than, than, you know, full-depth asphalt overlay, uh, but it does a great job. It knits the road back together, it keeps the water out, and, uh, the surface is, is, um, stones, so after the first year when you plow it, you knock all the shiny stuff off the stones, and they look like real asphalt. Another product I like to use in subdivisions is Cape Seal. Dave, you're well aware of that. Um, some of our subdivisions are really big. Um, this year, we just finished shimming down on, uh, Greenview, all the roads in Greenview, and then the big subdivision that's, um, Gary and Mary and, uh, Paula going up the hill. Those have been shimmed, and we're gonna rubber chip seal those. Uh, we're also gonna rubber chip 106 from the Plainville Line to the 495 Overpass, and from the 95 Overpass to the Mansfield Town Line. Um, that road's not in bad shape, but I want to make sure it doesn't get in worse shape, so the rubber chip seal will solve that at a very low cost per mile.
Roger, a question on that. When you decide to do those roadways that you just explained, do you notify all the residents?
Oh, yeah, we have, we have, uh, when we did Dave's neighborhood, we had mailbox stuffers, we had signs up, we had, uh, the variable message board. You have to do that.
They'll, they'll know it's coming.
Yeah.
Worst road in Tauric? If, if you're gonna do, can you just quickly explain that process so we don't get phone calls, um, that our road's not finished?
Yeah, the, we took warmer weather to do it.
I, I get them too. Um, it's a, you know, most of the processes are more than one step, uh, and, uh, the first step for doing Rubber Chip Seal is to, to, uh, do shimming, so the road surface has a good crown, and it sheds the water right. We also have to go in sometimes and do basin adjustments and things like that, but since you, with a Rubber Chip Seal, you're not raising the grade, uh, it's just a, about a, less than a quarter of an inch that you put on. Cape Seal is another process. In your neighborhood, we really had to do a lot of work, because that pavement had been there for, I think, 45 years and not been touched. So, up there, we had to do almost every single basin and manhole. We, we replaced a number of throatstones, did a lot of curb adjustments. Uh, it was a big job. Greenview's not gonna be so bad, but the roads are 30, 36 feet wide down there, so it's gonna eat a lot of product. Uh, and, but you have to do these at the right time. We've done a lot in the subdivision. I mean, I think I've done as much subdivision work as I've done on the, on the mains and secondaries. But we have to do a little bit on a lot of roads. What's gonna help us this year is, uh, the worst road in town is Beach Street, and the second worst is the section of North Street from the railroad crossing to, uh, Rentham. Uh, I'm gonna do Beach Street because we're gonna re-line that 12-inch water main starting very soon, and then we're gonna transfer all the services and all of the hydrants and all of the, the feeders to the local subdivisions up there, over to the 12 that's being re-lined, and abandon the 6 and 8 in place. So, we don't have, we'll have one water main with everything on it, and that water main's a big transmittal main, because the water from that main is what goes down to Ashcroft and gets boosted up to the, to the high-pressure district. North Street, I'm gonna wait till I do the railroad crossing, see how it looks, and if I have, uh, enough funding left at the end of the year, I'll probably prepare North Street and then do it next year. Uh, I got a little piece of main I gotta put in there, I think. Um, I haven't made a final decision on that yet, uh, but when we do Beach Street, it's gonna take a lot of money. Fortunately, we're gonna tear it up with water money, and we're gonna re, we're gonna fix it with water money. So, we're gonna spend a little bit more money than the, the Chapter 90 and, and the meals tax money this year, because Beach Street's a big project. It's 10, 1,000 feet of pavement, and it needs to be done bad. Other roads, uh, I got a list of them here, but I'll, I'll ma, I'll send it up to you, but I'll just read them off quickly. I'm gonna do that last piece of Fairway Lane that you showed on this, on the slideshow. Uh, we did Fairway Lane a couple of years ago. We did Cape Seal down at the end, and we did some chip seal on Stratton coming up the hill to, to Fairway Lane, but the last piece needs to be milled and resurfaced. It's really in tough shape. You know that, 'cause you, you've been there. We're gonna super, superpave Wayne and Sherwood. Uh, those were the two that we didn't get last year. Uh, we did the other triangle on the other side, Eastman and, and that area. Um, we're gonna mill and superpave Water Street, Beach Tree Road, which really needs it, um, Pine Street, going up the hill from the Lafayette House to the Norfolk Line, um, Prospect Street, the last section that goes between Water Street and Granite Street. The rest of, rest of that street, Prospect Street, is pretty good. Uh, it took a beating this winter, by the way. Then we're gonna do Cheryl, Louise, and Reynolds. Those are up at the, almost, they're right off of Oak Street and Mechanic Street on the north side of Oak Street. Cape Seal, I'm gonna do Paula, Catherine, Mary Way, Gary Road, uh, Childs, Blackington, that's the Bs and the, uh, and the Cs, um, all of those two subdivisions. And then I'm gonna rubber chip, as I said, Cedar Street and Green Street, Railroad Avenue, which we prepped last year, Old Green Street, which we prepped last year, and South Grove. And if we get lucky and figure out how to free up the money from, uh, Hanover Project, we ought to do Fisher Street and South High. Uh, Fisher Street really needs work. Uh, that's a mill and resurface job, and I would do South High the same way. And since I'm gonna be working up there on Old Green Street, if I do Old Green Street, I think the neighbors are gonna come out of the woodwork and say, "Well, you're gonna do our street," so.
How much money was put aside, um, for that project?
To the discretion of the selectmen, they put away $150,000, but there's some, some conditions that we have to follow before we can use that, one of which is the board has to, has to say they're gonna, you know, what they're gonna do, so. And I'm not, not asking you to do that tonight, because, uh, we need more time to pass, but it's important to get those streets done. Uh, they're not, Fisher's bad. Uh, North High's, uh, South High's not so bad, but, uh, it'd be good to catch it in the next year or two, so. Anybody got any other questions? Be happy to answer them, otherwise...
Yeah, I have one, seeing that you did his road when he was chairman, one Spruce Street getting done.
I already did Spruce Street.
Mike Stanton got a full pavement job, yeah.
Oh, he got Cape Seal.
Oh, all right.
You got, you got blacktop on Spruce Street.
Roger, I can just add, and before you, and going back to the day when we were anticipating a DPW, we had water, sewer, highway, park, and, um, tree and park, and sometimes it was a left hand, not knowing what the right hand was doing. Not that the departments were bad, but there was no unity. And I remember some roads, new pavement, 100-year water line, break up the water line later on new pavement, so that's not happening, but I, I just want to say thank you to the cohesiveness, the coordination, the effort that you're putting in. This is head and shoulders over what we had seven, eight years ago.
Well, credit goes to the board, too, because they dedicated the remainder of the meals tax, uh, above and beyond what's needed for OPEB to roads, and I think that's really important to continue that. I really support paying off the OPEB. I think that's the, the best debt that you could spend that money on. Uh, but Randy and I work together. Randy has a program. He knows when he's gonna get it paid off, and whatever's left at the end, uh, we get. One of the things the board could do to help us, uh, Mass Municipal Association and all of the highway, uh, groups that I belong to have been lobbying Mass DOT for years to put a $300 million bond issue up there for roads in, in the Commonwealth, and that would be Chapter 90. That would give us one and a half times what we're now getting for Chapter 90, and that would go a long ways. That would, that would get us over a million dollars in Chapter 90 money, and then I could add to that the meals tax, and that would keep us on the upside right about there, and that's where you really want to be, because getting up there is expensive. That's, that's big money. But if we get on that white part and stay there, uh, at the end of maybe the next three or four years, we'll be looking at sidewalks and, you know, handicap ramps and, and curb work and things like that, that we can't do now. The other thing is, Jim, you mentioned the wa, I've been able to coordinate very well with water. There are still utilities out there that just don't quite get it. I, I always have problems with the gas company.
Oh, the, the private utilities?
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, we're work, I'm trying to work hard on them to see, I, I'm gonna deny them on Chestnut Street. They wanna do a house on Chestnut Street. I looked at it today, and I just said, "No, I'm not gonna cut that road." I just finished it last year, and it's gonna stay that way for four more years before they can put a gas service in, and it...
Roger, do you have a choice on that? Don't we have a five-year moratorium?
You have a five-year moratorium, and I can send them to you and let them beg you, but I'd rather just deny them, and if they want to come and see you, that's fine. Any other questions?
I'd, one comment to piggyback on Jim's, kudos to you. Talked to Roger and the other Roger I had Phil last night before town meeting about the amount of accidents at the end of West, where West and South Street meet. There was one yesterday or the day before. Seems like every other day, there's pretty decent accidents. So we talked a little bit about, you know, straightening the intersection or whatever. And Roger, I had the foresight to say, "Well, let's start talking about it now because I have to redo the bridge and the dam that's down there, and I'm gonna be doing that next year, and that would be the time to do it." So you're always forward-thinking like that, so.
Well, we're looking at a couple other intersections that really need work. One of the other ones is East Street and Co Casa Street.
Yeah, that's awful, too.
Yeah, and there's a way to fix that that's very short money. And it's gonna take some engineering, which I'll do. And we need to do a survey and, you know, take a look at it. But I can make that, make East Street come right out at the apex of the curve, the big curve on Co Casa Street, so the site distance would improve in both directions. We would tighten up the roadway itself, take away those big cheeks. And I'd have to do a little driveway adjustment on the north side. But on the south side, I would wipe out that big curve that comes almost to the bridge before it meshes with Co Casa Street and make that into park. It would be beautiful up there. We could double the size of the park and really improve the intersection for very short money. I don't think it's gonna be big money at all. The other thing is, I don't know if Bill told you, but it looks like we're gonna be able to go ahead with the roundabout. It'll be a big job for us, and I knew it was gonna be from the day we conceived of doing it. But it looks like we're gonna get a contract now, and Secretary Ash is gonna raise the balance of the money that's needed to fund the overage that was created by Mass DOT. And I can tell you, I tried to horse trade with them. I tried everything I could, and they just wouldn't play the game with me.
The full-depth requirements?
Yeah.
They wouldn't budge on that?
They wouldn't budge on that.
It's their road, so, you know, but in our position on that-
I offered to take it, Jim.
Right.
Because they don't maintain Central Street at all. I offered to take Central Street, too. And I said, "I'll take both of those. Let me do the roundabout my way." I was just gonna mill it and profile it. And we had good plans. The engineer did it for the shopping center, did the plans. He did a great job on it, but I couldn't get anywhere with him, so.
Yeah, it was a real fight all the way through. But, you know, fortunately, we were able to prevail upon the state that, "Look, it's your road. You want a full-depth reconstruction, you can pay for it. And we're not gonna pay for it. It's your road, and you wanna give it to us, then we'll do it our way. But if you wanna do it yourself, you gotta pay for it. We're not paying for it."
We have to take out all of the slope-faced edging that's there. And it's the old style, the good stuff, the big, heavy stuff. And we're gonna put VB back in, vertical curb. And I don't, I really don't like vertical curb. The pieces you get today are thin. You have to put double concrete on both sides. It's a construction nightmare compared to the good old stuff. That's why I sever every foot of curb that I get. I'm gonna get the slope-faced edging out of that job, though. That's gonna, I'm gonna exact that from the state.
Don't say that too loud.
Thank you for your patience.
Alright, thanks, Roger.
Just one more question. People watching this, rather than call the selectmen and us text you when the roads are gonna get done, this information or a list of roads, is that on the website or do they call your office if people wanna know when their road is gonna go?
We put it on the website.
It's on the website?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't made the final decision on these roads yet. We're close, though.
Roger, just while you're here, because I get this question a lot from the board, and rightfully so, it's just, what's the latest status of the sewer project across the street?
It's, we're done. The sewer coming to serve, the stone building is in, the pipe's in the ground. What we got left to do now is, we gotta, just services. And I think there's only two services left to do. And they're gonna, they're gonna put a, they're gonna regrade everything out there, put a new cap on everything. I'm gonna let it go for about a year, and then I'm gonna grind and resurface it with brand-new pavement. So we're about done with the project. It's working. It's hooked up to a couple of houses already. I'm urging the rest of the folks to jump on board, get it now while the getting's good. So we'll have sewer all the way up to the corner as soon as we get to use the old fire station.
Alright, thank you, Roger.
Great job, Roger.
Thanks, Conrad.
Thanks, Conrad. Appreciate the help.
Conrad's uncle and I play golf together.
Yes?
I'm sorry I was late for assistance input, so.
Do you have your comments?
Sure.
Thank you. Lorraine Brew, 126 Mechanic Street. Sorry I couldn't be here in time for regular citizens' input. I just wanted to thank the board for their support last night at the town meeting for the Route One zoning articles. Dave, your comments right after Barney and Kevin's presentation was just the perfect cap. I think, you know, Barney and Kevin really did an incredible job there, but I think it was very important to have your comments and, you know, appreciate all the work that everyone did to come up with that. So I just wanted to take a second to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Lorraine. So Chairman, I think it's appropriate to thank Lorraine herself for all the work that the Economic Development Committee did, and her as the chairman of that committee as well.
Yeah.
That was an extraordinary amount of work.
I know it was stated last night, but that was the Economic Development Committee, the Planning Board, and the Economic Development Route One Subcommittee literally spent almost two years going through the zoning regulations, figuring out what works, what doesn't work, meeting with the Route One Business Association and the Craft Group for the first time in God knows how long. You had the Craft Group and the Route One Business Associations actually working together with a similar goal. So that was really good to see, and I think that was really largely because of Lorraine's efforts and the efforts of Economic Development Committee and the Planning Board. So kudos to them.
Well done.
Thank you.
Selectmen's update. I just wanna read something into the record. Last, at the last meeting, we approved our finance director's contract, renewed his contract. There was some comments made in an article that I think were misleading and salacious. So I just wanna read, I responded to the Foxborough Patch with a statement. I got a call from the Sun Chronicle. I provided them the same statement, which they didn't print. They took pieces of it. But I just wanna, I just wanna read it into the record. "In reading Foxborough Patch last evening, I felt compelled to respond to the article by Daniel Lebon on the approval of the finance director's contract, quote, 'despite behavior allegations,' unquote. Unfortunately, when a selectman or any other town official is compelled to respond publicly to internal personnel matters, he or she joins the fray with one hand tied behind his or her back. Those who would engage in an organized campaign of character assassination, even to the point of disregarding, concealing, or misrepresenting material facts in their quest for justice, do so without any reasonable restraints on their behavior or accountability. The town, on the other hand, respects the restraints under which it operates. The town cannot and will not open up personnel files for public scrutiny, even when, as here, I am confident in doing so, would reveal that any and all allegations have been fully investigated and responded to as appropriate. Our town charter vests in the town manager full authority and responsibility for personnel matters. I am convinced that this authority has been exercised responsibly with respect to the allegations alluded to in the Foxborough Patch article. It is fundamentally unfair to Mr. Scollins, to our town manager, and to the board to assume that allegations haven't been addressed simply because the outcome is not shared publicly. As a community leader, I strive to be diligent in the stewardship of the community, and I know that our town manager does as well. This means that all allegations against our employees are taken seriously, investigated thoroughly, and remedial action is taken as may be warranted. That is what I would expect from the town if I experienced any perceived mistreatment by a town employee. I also expect, though, that we will in turn afford our employees the requisite due process and safeguard the confidentiality of their personnel files. If Mr. Scollins's accusers were on the receiving end of allegations, I know that they would expect and be afforded the same from the town. With full knowledge of the facts, the board approved a new contract for Mr. Scollins in 2014. Again, with full knowledge of the facts, the board did so again this week. Mr. Scollins is an exceptional, capable, and dedicated public servant. He is deserving of his new contract and completely undeserving of the unformed, unprincipled attacks he has endured." Now, what happened last week, I tried very hard to avoid. We spent a lot of time trying to uncover the facts in some of these allegations, and I think I failed at that. And I'm gonna take responsibility for it. But knowing the facts and that the board voted five-zero to approve the contract, not only this most recent contract, but also in 2014, absent of a vote, I hope the board would support my comments. So, and I'll leave it at that. On another topic, town meeting. So I think last night was a perfect indication why we should seriously look into televising AdCom meetings. People are coming to town meeting, not getting the facts. There's presentations made throughout the process. AdCom has plenty of meetings. They vet these articles extensively. The problem is, people aren't going to AdCom meetings. They're too busy. So I really think we should, you know, obviously, it's the town moderator's call, I do believe. But I think there really should be a push to get those meetings televised. I think it would just make town meetings work so much smoothly. It's not gonna be perfect because you're still gonna have people that are gonna show up at the last minute and try and figure out what's going on based on the warrant articles. But I think it would be a step in the right direction. We did it with CIP, this most recent CIP session. I think with today's technology, you know, not only AdCom, I think all the board meetings should be televised. I know it puts a lot of strain on our cable access volunteers, but the information that happens in these meetings is important. And we're asking people to make informed decisions and make decisions based on fact. It's incumbent on us to get the facts out to them. And if we're not doing that now, we have to look at other means of getting those facts out to them. And using technology is one way to do it. So just my two cents and-
I agree with you on that. I mean, I heard a lot of comments from people leaving there last night and throughout the day-to-day. This is why you never get a lot of people going because of the way, the length of that meeting. And, you know, we were discussing and voting on some important stuff at the end of the night, and we didn't even have a quorum. So really gotta look at doing something, you know, starting at seven as opposed to seven-thirty. But even like last night, it didn't even really start till quarter of eight, ten of eight. And by the time we voted on the first real thing, it was, God, it was after nine o'clock, I think.
Just one suggestion that the board might consider is just actually having a meeting with the moderator about this and have a conversation with him and discuss this very, because I don't disagree with the position that the board, I know the board is technologically thinking a position on us, but, you know, one of the things that seems clear is that information is very powerful. And it's clear, and it's, we go through the meetings, month after month after month after month, week after week after week, with all the work that's done by the AdCom and the various town boards and committees and all the different employees that show up at those meetings, providing information at length, exceptional length, to, which really clarifies the issues for the committee itself. And that's how they arrive at their recommendations. Unfortunately, the town meeting never sees that. And because they don't go to those meetings, it's rarely rare that you get people to show up at all at those AdCom meetings to get the information that really is helpful to understand when they go to the town meeting and understand what they're voting on. So information is very powerful, and I think if, to the extent that that can be brought to the forefront, particularly in today's society where people just don't go to meetings, they'd rather watch it at home, that it's actually very helpful when they do attend those meetings, which only occurs twice a year, usually typically one in the spring, one in the fall. And to have that kind of information as background walking into that room, I think there would be a lot less debate and a lot more constructive discussion on those meetings. Whereas last night, all you heard from folks constantly parading to the mic was, "I don't know anything about this," or completely misinformed about the issues, which many of the people that sat on that stage and many of the people sitting in the audience had been working on for months and years, particularly with the economic development work. And it was actually disappointing to see that kind of discussion in some cases because it really didn't give credit to the work that had been done by so many people in such a positive way. So I couldn't disagree with you. I couldn't disagree at all in anything you just stated, Mr. Chairman. I think that, you know, perhaps a conversation with the moderator on that, if the board is so compelled to do so, would be, might be helpful. I just think that, you know, having that, we're in a different world today where people, information is powerful.
So I just know all the work that AdCom puts into it-
Right.
-and vets those warrant articles, and then, you know, have someone come up to the microphone and say, "What is this?" I just, it's-
It's frustrating. It's very frustrating. It's frustrating to watch. I mean, it just-
With all that being said, we need a hundred people just coming, money in the schools.
Exactly right. Exactly right.
Tell all your friends, send out emails.
Steph, you gotta come up.
Stephanie McGowan, Nineteen Roads Lane. And you know something? Even if you sit on some of these committees or boards, sometimes you miss a meeting. And honestly, then you, if you miss a presentation, so, you know, you're trying to catch up with other board members or, so, you know, I'm not saying I'm for or against it. That's the moderator's decision. But it might be helpful to be able to, or, you know, if economic development comes into another board and a member's missing, so you've missed a presentation. So probably if you could go back and look at it, it would be helpful. So like I said, I'm, I have no opinion on it. Whatever way it goes, I'm okay with. I feel like if you decide to sit on a board, you're responsible for the words that come out of your mouth. So whether it's televised or not televised, I don't really have an opinion. I will go along with whatever people decide. But it could be helpful if you miss a meeting, you have a way to catch up and, you know, and see. And hopefully, that would, people would watch the meetings, and then they would be a little more informed.
Or at least watch a meeting that they're concerned about.
Yeah, absolutely.
You can pick and choose. You don't have to watch them all.
If there's a certain, yeah, I mean, it absolutely, you know, I don't wanna make anybody mad by giving an opinion. I will just go with the flow. Whatever is decided is fine with me. But it might be helpful because you could catch up. I mean, I happen to go on vacation. I missed three meetings in a row. And other than that, I didn't miss a meeting all year. But there was information given and, not to rub it in or anything, but yeah. But, you know, it would be a way to, for anybody sitting on any board or committee, you know. I mean, it's voluntary, and so, you know, things come up in life, so you may have to miss a meeting. And it would be an opportunity to be able to find out what you missed and be informed instead of trying to catch up. And, you know, you can read the minutes, but the minutes don't give you a presentation or so. It's, you know, it's something to think about anyhow. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board on update?
I got some other stuff on the updates. I believe tomorrow night is the ribbon cutting at Maryland Robin Center.
It is, yeah.
Five o'clock, open to the public, I'm assuming. And then on Friday night at six o'clock on the Common is the dedication ribbon cutting for the Global War on Terror Memorial. And then just one other thing. Dave mentioned it earlier. I just wanna thank everybody that came out and voted at the town election. Granted, it was only seventeen percent turnout, which would always like to see more people vote, but appreciate everybody that came out. Try to get to twenty-five or thirty percent next year. Try to get to 25 or 30% next year. That's all I have.
Nothing.
Just to echo what Chris said, you know, thanks to everyone that came out to vote, people that got newly engaged, you know, maybe you've never watched a candidate's night before, maybe you don't subscribe to the reporter, picking up the paper, reading about the school committee, reading about, you know, me, Chris, Jenny, you know, reading the Warren Articles, just everyone that was able to get out, get informed, and vote, and hopefully we can make that number better for next year. So it's an improvement, but we still have, have a ways to go. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things that I wanted to bring your attention. First of all, I want to congratulate the board members, Leah, for making, being added to the board, and certainly want to thank Jenny as well for all her dedicated service to this community, and to Chris, and congratulations to Chris for getting re-elected to the board, and to you, Mr. Chairman, for your work as chairman for the past two years, it's been a long work, a lot of work for you, particularly, you've made yourself available to me on many occasions when I really needed your input on things, and I really do appreciate all the effort that you put into that, so thank you. You've made my job easier on some very difficult times, so thank you for that. I do want to announce, it seems like the retirement bug is starting to hit a few people in this town, and I just, this one is one that I was surprised at, but under circumstances, I won't get into the circumstances why, but, because they're personal in this individual's case, but just wanted to let you know that Vicki Low has decided to retire as Council on Aging Director, and Vicki has been a very widely recognized director of the Council on Aging for this community, is not only in this community but throughout the state, she's really revered as being a highly knowledgeable and highly decorated individual in her field, and very well respected, and so I, we're going to miss her tremendously because of all the work that she's done for the community, and personally, I'm going to miss her contributions to our staff and to all the work that she's done for us since we've been here, and I want to thank her personally for all the work that she's done. She'll be leaving us in July, she does have some planned vacation time during the month of July, but she's going to be staying with us, and we're going to start the process co-existently with the Fire Chiefs process as well, so we'll be working on two significant department heads' position processes over the next several months. But, sorry to see that happen, but I also completely understand the circumstance under which that is occurring, and again, want to thank her for all her work. I too wanted to just make mention of the ribbon cutting of the Global War on Terror. I personally will not be available for the next few days, I had some personally good news that my son made it to the NCAA Regional Finals for baseball, they won their conference championship over the weekend, and they're going to be playing in the NCAA Regionals this upcoming weekend in New York, so I'm going to be leaving tomorrow night to go up and see him play, so, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to see that happen, so I'm really, really proud of him and grateful for the opportunity to do that. The town meeting is continued to next Monday night, so we do want to make sure everybody is aware of the fact we're going to need at least 100 people to be there, hopefully we'll see more than that, to try and finish up the final three articles that were there. One of those articles is the sewer article for the Borough School Project, so that's a really important piece. Another one, another one is the street acceptance, and the other one is the accepting of new biola on drones, which again is, all three items are very important to do, and I think it's really, it's critical that we finish that and close that meeting out, so all the items that have been done and acted on will become effective once that meeting is formally completed. So, really important that everything, that's all the work that was done last night is, has to be finalized, and it's really important for people to get out and finish that work by the town next week. One thing that we have been working on is the middle school, with the middle school is that we've been working on, with a couple of the middle school teachers on the seventh grade class with the issue of civics. One thing that's been missing over the years is that there isn't a lot of focus and attention on civics in schools, in the school curriculum, and so, a couple of the teachers reached out to us, and particularly the school principal at the middle school, reached out to us and asked if we would assist in that effort. So what we've been doing over the course of the past few weeks and a few weeks coming going forward, is that we've been sending many of our department heads, including myself and many of the folks that are here tonight, including Randy and Mary Beth, to over to the school and actually teaching the kids about what we do and what, how it's important to be involved in the local level and local government. Many, and I will tell you, it's been a tremendous experience for all of us collectively, for the, the give and take from the kids is just extraordinary, they do a terrific job, and the questions are actually excellent. So they're really well informed, it's great to see the feedback and get their involvement, and it's really good to be able to get them involved at a very young age so that they can see how government works at the local level. We are going to culminate that effort in the very first Student Government Day here in Foxborough on June 5th, where we'll actually have the kids come here and actually participate in an acting role as various department heads and boards and committees, where we'll actually have mock selectmen meetings and mock school committee meetings, and actually get them involved, culminating in a luncheon that will be held up at Gillette Stadium in the afternoon. So, a really exciting time for them, appreciate the cooperation and assistance of all the department heads and the school, and the schools have been participating in this process, as well as the cooperation from Gillette to help post the luncheon, which I think will be an exciting time for all of them as well. And finally, I just, I do myself want to read something into the record tonight that, which I felt was really unfortunate, which occurred the other night, because I really thought that was a positive outcome to the finance director's contract, and unfortunately it was marred by some comments which I didn't think were really appropriate given the circumstances. So, I'm just going to read this into the record as well. "On Tuesday night, May 1st, 2018, the board of selectmen took a positive action to ratify a new three-year employment contract for the town's director of finance, Randy Scollins. Shortly after the synonymous 5-0 vote of support for Mr. Scollins, public comments made by Ms. Heather Harding and followed by those by Ms. Deborah Stewart, attempted to mar this action by expressing statements questioning or impugning the character of the reputation of this dedicated public official. While the motivation behind these comments made by these individuals remains unclear to me, I found the comments to be extremely inappropriate and disrespectful to a dedicated public servant of 14 years with an extraordinary record of accomplishment. In the four years that I have worked with Mr. Scollins, I have found him to be extremely knowledgeable, professional, and dedicated to his role. His body of work has established Foxborough as being one of the best financially operated municipalities in the Commonwealth. I take extreme exception to the comments made by any individuals who will publicly attack the reputation of a public official whose performance is neither worthy nor remotely reflective of such comments. As public officials, we recognize and acknowledge that we are subject to criticism of our work product as this is consistent with the democratic process. However, this does not mean that the public forums are a free opportunity to attack the character of a public official. To engage in such activity is neither acceptable nor should it be tolerated. Given all the positive things that are going on in this community, it remains my hope that the focus and mission of this town will not be deterred in any way by the personal motivations of a few individuals, but rather, the greater good of Foxborough will continue to be served in our collective best interest." Thank you.
Mary Beth?
Sure. I just have a few items. First, I want to express my thanks to Dave Feldman for his leadership. Chris, be ready, more than you know, we reach out to you. We're, next week, because of this week was town meeting, next week, next selectmen's meeting, we'll be summarizing the comments. Thank you for all getting your performance evaluation comments for the town manager's evaluation into me. We're summarizing those comments as we have in the past, and I will deliver a summary of that to you. The software, aided by that software, which I want to thank, is part of the budget in town meeting, that is now available to us, where we can electronically submit our performance evaluations and they can calculate the combined scores, et cetera, and it's really been a great time saver of each and every department, and they've appreciated that. So that will be next selectmen's meeting tomorrow, in keeping with all the language and all of the contracts that have a July 1 performance deadline, we'll be kicking off, sending out the performance evaluations to steelworkers, DPW, non-union folks. Other folks are on a different schedule, we still have the library, which we're going to be engaging in collective bargaining with, and coming up with their performance tool. So, once we begin our library negotiations, we will now have every single group on a performance evaluation process. The, want to thank the town for affirming the, both the DPW and the fire contract last night. I was really pleased and appreciate seeing all of our members there, saw lots of firefighters, DPW workers there to support the contract, I hope they'll come back Monday night, and...
By the way, it's not, it's not official.
That's right, that's right, so they need to come back, they need to come back to address that, that's exactly right.
And then the work can begin again on the next round of contracts, but a lot of work on every, on all sides went into that, and thank the board for their support. Like Bill always says, we have to sell these contracts four times, you know, so it was nice to get the support of our hard-working DPW and fire folks in their contracts. As Bill said, we'll be busying ourselves with some recruitment of department heads, and we're wrapping up some of our summer hiring right now, including a payroll position to DPW and a water position, so it's been quite busy, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Do you have an update on the impact bargaining?
Oh yes, thank you for mentioning that. So, as you recall, you approved the child sexual abuse training policy, you know, the practice has been, in effect with the town, we have been doing the consistent training, but to just give it a little more teeth, we have a policy now that requires within 90 days of an employee being hired, they have to do the training, whether it's online or in person, and we have a person in our office that's going to be trained as a trainer, Amanda, and we impact bargained with steelworkers, they had a few questions, the two units, they're going to come back to us, I think we came to an agreement that we had a little bit of question and pushback, they wanted us to water it down a little, and we held line and said that, you know, this was an important thing for us to do, we do it anyway, we train people anyway, and Thursday, we're impact bargaining it with the DPW union. It's going to be part of the library negotiations, we're starting those, and police and fire are already mandatory reporters, so we don't need to bargain with them.
There's no impact there, so.
So.
Good. Let's keep the momentum.
Progress, yep, making progress. That's it, thank you.
Okay, we have one more action item.
Did you get that?
I did, Amanda has it here.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
You're still reading.
No, 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 absolutely not. Now we know you're actually human.
I just wanted to make sure that we have all the documentation.
That's perfect.
You need to motion these seconds of it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor? Aye.
Just to give an update, I know I recuse myself, but we have not closed on the Orpheum, and I'm mentioning this because it's, the Orpheum seems to be a big part of a lot of the stuff that you see going on in downtown. We're scheduled to close on it on the 30th of May, there are three separate owners to the Orpheum, and there was some utility easements and some past issues that it's just taking. Unfortunately, they're in three different parts of the country, so to get them all together, they're coming in together the end of May, so hopefully we close at the end of May, which brings us to know more of these one-day liquor licenses, so the application's ready to go in, but just wanted to thank everyone for the constant, it seems like every hearing is a one-day liquor license, and reason being, it's, I think we're booked out a year in advance on a lot of the stuff at the Orpheum right now, so.
I like to just keep Bob on his toes.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, you're rightfully to ask that question, because I, Bob opened his big mouth and said, "This will be the last one."
Three months ago.
Twelve liquor licenses ago.
But you know what, it's just, it's just great to see it hopping and active.
Yeah, reactive, actively.
I mean, that's great for the town, it's great for the downtown, you know, we need to build off of that, so, guys are doing a great job, keep it up.
Move toward your end.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks everyone.